We will move along as quickly as possible as we have members in the board.
Yes.
First item on our agenda, date is March 21st, should be today's date, so on the park ride, everybody just wants to correct that.
Do you have a rule or a score?
Yeah.
If not, we'll move on to approval of last month's, March 21st, meeting minutes. Everyone's had an opportunity to review those, entertaining motion to approve. Second, any discussion? If not, all the favors out, opposed. This time, we have a comment for Commissioner Tatum.
Just a couple, I appreciate y'all's discussions last month. I thought there was a lot of really outstanding information that came out of that. I, as the commissioner, was chomping at the bit a couple times to jump in there and say something, I had to bite my tongue because I don't want to influence y'all's decisions. It sounded like after I got ready to say something, y'all worked your way around it. I appreciate it, and I appreciate y'all taking this into consideration.
Do you know where we're at with the subdivision, changes to the subdivision order?
Manchester.
If anyone here has hopefully made the members to the subdivision order. If anybody's got any questions for Commissioner Tatum?
Thank you, sir.
We'll move on to public comment section of the meeting. We do have several people to speak tonight, we appreciate you coming out, we're very interested in what you have to say. We do ask that your comments would pertain to the subject at hand that the planning board is currently reviewing, and would ask that you try to limit your comments to somewhere around four minutes, that way we can move through everyone and still have time to talk to them. For fact being said, Sheriff Holland, if you have comments you'd like to make, we'd love to hear.
I just heard about this recently, and just wanted to come and see what is being talked about and why that's being considered, and I'm appalled at what happened where Walmart went in, I just go the other direction, it upsets me every time I go by. And I just am coming to work and see and try to give more information.
If you would, when you introduce yourself, if you would tell us what community you live in, make this a little bit background, that probably helped involve the planning board members. Ms. Walden?
I'm gonna stand up, but if my hands get to shaking, I'll have a table full of them. And I've been here a lot longer than most of you, and sometimes longer than Joe, I've been put together. However, I live in Holly Springs, and we've been there for almost 80 years. I want to say, starting out with a very well-known phrase coined by Thomas Jefferson while he was writing the Declaration of Independence in the summer of 1776. "We hold these truths to be self-evident." It seems to me that it is self-evident that we are making a terrible irreversible mistake when we ignore the force we mildly term Mother Nature, and allow distortion and destruction of the banks of streams and rivers, allow our cause, the drastic changes to land abutting streams, to be covered with what we call field dirt, which truthfully is more often a sterile mixture of rock, chunks of concrete or asphalt, and inferior quality soil from beneath the topsoil. The most fertile arable land we have is found in what we term bottomland, along the banks of waterways. Here in the mountains, where relatively level farmland is at a premium, it becomes even more short-sighted to devastate those priceless acres by piling them over with dirt and rock of far less quality. In allowing land to be filled in a floodplain, we try to pit our rights against the rights of a stream, but filling on one side of a stream may very well cancel out the rights of a landowner across the creek. It is a fact that narrowing a stream's way by filling in material along its edges causes flooding both above and below the fill site. The stream with higher, steeper banks that cannot easily climb either flows in higher velocity and with increased force downstream, or it backs up and inundates more land upstream. More swift flow of the water causes more damage to stream banks with caving off and washing away the soil, eroding the valuable bottomland, and carrying more soil downstream to wind up as silt built up in a lake or against the first dam in the river. When building of any kind is allowed in floodplain areas, the first thing that happens is the blade of a bulldozer cuts into the good soil, removing the topsoil and causing the earth to bleed red dirt, as deadly in its way as a knife blade in human flesh will cause you to bleed red blood. The first structure erected in a floodplain can be considered as the first step to urbanization of the area even though it may be far from a settled area. We have obvious evidence in downtown Franklin of how much damage can be caused by a stream where too much filling and building has attempted to ignore the force of the water. Crawford Branch is a prime example. If you don't believe me, talk to Tommy Nicholson, whose parents' home was flooded more than once by Crawford Branch, mostly due to improper culvert and improper, unwise filling of the land on the other side of the creek. Badly designed stream crossings to allow access to the fill spade, approved by the Army Corps of Engineers several years ago, have changed the relation of that home to the stream. We have all observed on TV the devastation, death, and loss of property arising from attempts of that same organization to control the Mississippi River. Water is going to go downhill, and the speed with which it travels and the force it exerts against land or anything else in its way can be directly affected by human activities along the stream banks. I live on land which has been a farm since 1840, and was farmed before that by the Native Americans who lived on it. In 1942, the owners of my land at that time rerouted a segment of the creek from its natural bed, creating a steep-sided, straight waterway which caused the area into which it was diverted to become marshy and mostly unusable as farmland. A few years ago, this area was used by the state as a mitigation project, and they returned the meanders of the creek to slow down the force of water moving downhill. A soil survey of Macon County shows that most of that land, as well as a lot of my own, is what is termed the quasi-soil, unsuitable to accommodate septic systems or building, but can be used for pasture, hayfields, and other agrarian activities. I have many times stated in public that man cannot unscramble an egg no matter how he tries. This is still true. We can tear up and damage bottomlands, we can't build them back or restore them to fertile healthy soil once they are filled and destroyed. There's a bumper sticker on the truck my husband drives which states, "No farms, no food." A terse but true comment, and destroying bottomlands by filling them with quote "field dirt" is a sure way to reduce the area available for farming. I urge you to consider her families, those who have gone before and those not yet born. Surely we owe to those who come after us at least a little land, which is left in the condition it has achieved over the millennia in which they can grow some natural food, and on which they can visit creeks and streams in a natural habitat. Once it is gone, it won't come back. Thank you.
Judge Quinn?
Okay, thank you, Carl. My name's Barrett Clinton, I live in the Burnington community of Macon County, and I am the current Chair of the Watershed Council, Macon County Watershed Council, and one of many co-authors of this ordinance that we're talking about today. In 2006, the commissioners charged the Watershed Council with developing an ordinance that was safe and effective, and that's exactly what we've done, and our philosophy going into it was to develop an ordinance that minimized the probability of property damage, personal injury, and loss of life. And we all know that those things can happen when Mother Nature has her way with us. So that's kind of the, and we spent two years, by the way, working on this, consulting with the Planning Board, with the county commissioners, getting input from everybody we could, including professionals outside the Watershed Council itself. There was some discussion last week, last month rather, and Joe Deal really did do a good job of expressing how, what the importance of this no fill requirement is to the agricultural industry in Macon County. Ms. Walden pointed that out as well, and I think that's something that we need to bear in mind, that once we take this land out of the agricultural base, it doesn't go back in, and so we reduce our ability to produce food and fiber and that sort of thing. The analogy that he used, and I used, his was better than mine, is that if you, when you fill into the floodplain, the physics of it is that you create a constriction, and you necessarily increase velocity, and you end up backing water in the case of a stream, backing water across the stream and upstream from the landowner where the fill was. And there was some discussion about, well, you have to fill on both sides of the stream in order to get that constriction. Well, that's not true. If you have a 10-foot channel, you fill two feet on this side, you have an eight-foot channel. If you fill one foot on one side, one foot on the other, you still have an eight-foot channel after the fill. So it doesn't matter what side, so that was some misinformation that was being passed around at the meeting last month. Thirdly, if we're talking about property rights, if this is about property rights, and again, Ms. Walden brought this out, is that if, whose property rights are we trying to protect here? What, you know, whose quality of life are we actually improving if we remove this requirement from the ordinance? Sure, if you take it out, if you vote to take it out, you're gonna, you know, give the right to the individual who has the land in the floodplain who wishes to fill, give him the right to do so at the expense of the adjoining property owners. So that's a very important point we need to keep in mind while we're having these discussions, and while you guys are thinking about which way you're gonna go with this. So I think you need to think in terms of the benefit to the many, you know, unfortunately maybe to the disbenefit of a few, in this case. Lastly, this is really an opportunity for Macon County to be a leader in this region, and to make the hard decision that it's gonna take, and other counties look at Macon County for direction actually, in how we make our decisions based on, you know, based on our land use decisions. What do we base these decisions on? And I think this is, you know, at times we can show our metal, and we can make the right decision, I think it's important for Macon County to grasp this opportunity, seize the moment, and vote your conscience, do the right thing to remain just as it is. Thank you, Carl, that's all I got.
Mr. Rock?
Thank you, John. I'm giving Carl a handout of my talking points, and I've only got about four or five that I want to talk about. Matter of background, my name is Bob Wright, I've worked with many of you before, I live in the Highlands Township outside the hospital in Macon County. And by way of background, I'm a retired engineer, I have a master's degree in engineering with a minor in civil mechanics. So we've studied as a member with Barry, I've been on the Watershed Council for the past 12 or 13 years. During the period of time that this ordinance was written, I was the Chair of the Watershed Council, as we developed, studied this for two years. I'd like to start out just by saying I hope that all of you have read a copy of the ordinance, and if you have, please pay attention to the very first part of it that talks about findings of fact and state of purpose. These are not just our comments, this is a set of national comments and findings overall. Secondly, I think it's important that we all have a common understanding of the function of what a floodplain is, and in very simple terms, a floodplain is nothing more than a reservoir, or a bowl, or a bowl around a stream or a river. Its function is to provide land and space for the water, floodwaters to slow down and attenuate. The very center of the stream called the floodway in the non-encroachment area is very tightly controlled. It's a highly dangerous area, floodplain, we talk about this special flood hazard area, is just very dangerous. And it flood, and it has a predictable characteristic of flooding in major storm events, major storm events which have occurred many times in Macon County. We talk about the engineering behind it, it's set up to be something called a hundred-year flood. The odd thing about the hundred-year flood is it doesn't occur every hundred years. We had two of them in September of 2004, the Peak Street incident, in fact, we had two 500-year floods at that great time, Hurricane Francis and Ivan. In an overall period of years back into the 1700s, 1800s of history, Macon County has had 10 or 12 of these major flooding events. This is not a matter of if it will happen again, it's only a matter of when it will happen again and what the effects will be. When you talk about the floodplain and fill, you can kind of make it very simplistic and talk about a glass of water. If you take a glass of water and put dirt, half of it, or a third of it, and then try to fill it up, it's not gonna hold as much water. The floodplain is the same kind of a physical, natural feature, except waters are moving very fast and very rapidly, and what happens when you create fill conditions in the floodplain, you then divert that water and speed somewhere downstream onto somebody else. You can't necessarily say who, can't necessarily say when, but it is going, water is going to go downstream and impact someone else. My good friend Jimmy and I have been talking for 12, 15 years, and debating, we can debate whether it's one-inch fill or 10-foot fill, but it's going to, no matter how much you fill in a designed floodplain area, you're going to decrease that reservoir capability and push water downstream. The next point I'd like to talk about, and I think this question's been asked a lot, apparently, is why did we in Macon County choose to include a no fill prohibition and extend that prohibition from the floodway into the floodplain? It's stronger, it's a stronger feature than the model ordinance. And that question's, well, why do we have to be different than the model ordinance? Very soon, we have, we looked at this over two years, and Watershed Council very strongly concluded two things. You have to understand the background of the model ordinance that everybody started with. This is a national and state model developed by people that developed primarily for coastal plains and major river systems like the Mississippi. It does not know anything about being in the mountains that we live in. In the mountains where we live, we all, we have very steep terrain, our waterways may not be as big as the Mississippi River, but they rise much faster, and have much higher velocities, and therefore can be more dangerous to the people who are living near those waterways. The Watershed Council made a very simple, common sense decision. We chose to extend the fill prohibition into the floodplain because it's the safest thing to do, it guarantees the maximum safety we can provide for both our public citizens and people living near the water, and for those emergency rescue people who have to go in and pull them out. We did this two years after the background of Peak Street and the major flooding that occurred with Hurricane Ivan, and we had input from the EMS people, we had input, Barry said, from many different professionals, and the entire, part of this ordinance is not about land use. The entire function was public safety, protecting those people to the best that Macon County could do. 2008, the Board of Commissioners agreed to that regulation and passed this ordinance. Al Tony, you have a question before you. A third point, we are not prohibiting development in the floodplain in this ordinance. This ordinance, about half of it is devoted to defining flood development permit requirements and things people can do to build safely in the floodplain. What we're talking about is prohibiting fill in the floodplain, one way of developing in the floodplain. Fill creates an improbable boundary that's going to divert the water. The ordinance describes many other ways to floodproof structures and floodproof residential structures and keep people safer if they develop in the floodplain. So a common misconception is that this is a prohibition about development, it's not. It's a prohibition about adding dirt to the reservoir that lets the floodplain do its Finally, as Barry mentioned, if some of you consider this to be a property rights issue, we agree. We agree in the fact that Watershed Council looks that the property rights of the people downstream are just as important, or more important, than the individual who wants to do something on this piece of property in one place. And may not be aware for the fact that by doing it, he's going to flood somebody's else's house, he may injure somebody, he may damage their property because of this diversion. The project that I believe has caused a lot of discussion about this particular no fill prohibition at Wells Grove Baptist Church, if you've been there, and I've been there about five years ago, been there again in the last week or two. I understand the good people of the church and what they want to do, but if you look out there, we're not talking about putting it forward to fill. They're filling eight to 10-foot deep. They fill all the way up to the edge of the floodplain mapped area, and would like to fill all the way to the floodway, to the most dangerous part in the area, where the highest water velocity. They're creating, in this project, for all good intentions, a massive wall that's going to send a lot of floodwater downstream onto somebody's property and do a lot of damage. It's my conviction, and I don't, I've not talked to anyone in the church, but it's my personal conviction that the good people of the church have not ever been told this, nor do they consider, nor would they want to, do something that's gonna put somebody else's life or property at risk. I thank you, I will make, and remind you, the Watershed Council looked in the perspective of the last major flooding event in September 2004, in Peak Street tragedy. We studied this for two years, and Commissioners agree, this ordinance should stay in effect as it is currently written. Thank you.
Mr. McCastle?
I guess I walk up here, someone you want to bow my background, and right now, I'm just a farmer out on Rose Creek, I raise a few cattle. I did work in the agriculture industry for 32 years, over Havo here in Macon County, and I observed that, I've got three degrees from N C State of Emergency and a Delta Education. Nothing about me. Some of the most fertile farmland in this world are resolved floodplain. I'm not saying it's all bad for agriculture to have a flood. What I am saying is, when you narrow those channels, when you create faster water, it's not just gonna scour the string bank, it's gonna scour the fertile farmland on the opposite side downstream. It's also gonna backwater up on someone's agriculture standpoint, that's one of the things you need to understand, it's gonna damage someone else's property. So if it's short-sighted gain from some group, or some organization, or some individual to make more money, we have farmers who would be able to fill property alongside the river, sell it for development, however they want it filled, and make more money, short-sighted one. Once you destroy, I think Slipp quoted, you can't unscramble an egg, you can't put that land back, once it's gone. The other thing I want to say is, when these floods occur, and they will, those swifter and deeper waters, I'm also a medical responder and a firefighter in the Burnington community, you endanger the emergency response personnel in this county. Many of you remember the flood a few years ago, there are people we couldn't get to. There were people, and Matt will attest to this, that we actually had signed a sheet of paper that gave us their next of kin, two contacts, because we said evacuate and come with us now, or we need somebody we can notify when this turns out bad. You endanger those first responders which are in this county mostly volunteer, that's not working, and that's what you're gonna do, because you're gonna increase the likelihood that people will be in these areas. If you develop them more, there are more folks out there, the more they're gonna have to be evacuated, there's little time to do that, and the members of the class flood. You all serve on this committee to better the public interest, and what I would ask you to do is base your decision today on sound science, not on emotion, whether I'm upset or people in this room are upset, or what you feel, because somebody's made a wonderful emotional speech, base it on sound science. Studies show that most emotional decisions end up with a bad result. Corps of Engineers has now spent millions of dollars putting meanders back in streams that 40, 50 years ago, we took them out and straightened them up, made the water move faster, got swifter, caused more damage. So let those studies be your guide, and base your decision you make today on good, sound science, not on emotion, not on who your friend is, not on who's gonna benefit in the short-sighted future. And I'd like to end this, and I don't love to make the original quote, and I paraphrased it, but I think that an industry that provides the food that you eat each day deserves your support. Thank you.
Mr. Deal?
Thank you, Carl. I don't like to be called Mister too, well, maybe joke you to come back, sound like you did a good job. But anyway, mine's from the agricultural perspective, I guess, more than any other, and we talked about floods and high water, I don't think too many people here, nobody sure remembers 1925, there might be a handful, I don't know what you said, 1949, Minor 73, Minor 76, nothing through the 80s and 90s, it's all about an end and end, everybody knows about 2004. Imagine all these folks in this, and cannot remember much about this county before 1976 when we had the little flood here.
Remember 43 flood.
Oh, they was on then too, I missed one, sorry. But anyway, we know all kinds of devastation comes from some of these floods, but we're talking about stream flow, I'm not talking about the scientific aspect, I'm just gonna tell you what I've seen. Sometimes that means more to people than what you can come up with figures and things like that. We have some natural impediments in this county to stream flow by nature, between Parton Stanfield Hill and Roy Stone Winters, that's a natural impediment, and that water will back up the river up there towards the coastal edge of campground, nothing we can do about that. Nothing we can do about it if we want to, I think probably legally, you can't go out there and open all the stuff, but that's a natural impediment. We've made some impediments. If you go out here, this is coming down the road here, looking at the industrial park road down where that double bridge, when it comes to big rain on Carte du Jade, I'm about to get this mud off and take it back and put it in the field, I don't want to walk away. It backs way up the creek up there, we've done that. But then we talked about, maybe we want to start filling in some flood areas, we're gonna create some more, what I call impediments to stream flow. I wouldn't want the bomb style meters to go down and fill his up and back the water up on me, and I wouldn't want to do it to somebody else. I'll tell you the reasons for that. We back the water up on somebody's ten playground, especially if they got a vegetable crop in there or a nursery crop, along where that water stands, the more chance of you having a fungal disease, bacterial disease, or a viral disease getting in the ground if that water's going on through. Hopefully, if there's any southern bacterial, well, if it's going on down to Fontana Dam that they're setting up there in my pocket where my tomatoes or peppers are, maybe I won't get where to see them so bad in there, maybe I won't have to wait 20 years to go back and plant that crop. That's one of the considerations that I have. Now I've got to think about gold along this line too, but if I could fill those three tracts of land we own in and sell them for lots, I could probably retire and go to Arizona or somewhere, and I wouldn't have to get up here in the dirt and dust no more, Joe could get him a job somewhere. But you know, I don't want to put the water over on the neighbor, I don't want to back it up on them, I wouldn't want them to do that to me, so that's the golden rules I do. So he's thinking about two different types of gold here, gold to put in my pocket, or gold to go on towards the future, I think. I think he's got, they've got a pamphlet Devon and Joe's printed out, says Steel Farms 1950, back in our, our trims, so, goes back at least seven or eight generations, even goes back to the, mostly from the Kinders, Mr. Tate, that's where we got our longest genealogy, but I'd like to see seven or eight generations on down the road, whether it's my family or somebody else's. I'd like for them to be able to still tend some of this ground like Kenneth's talking about. This bottom lands is good land, he'll grow. Last year, that big drought, that's in Illinois, Indiana, Nebraska, some of those places not over yet, corn zero to eighty, hardly, hardly ever do we have such a weather situation that we can't at least make a hundred bushful of corn to date. We've got more waterfall, we've got as good, not as good a ground as they have, but we've got adequate ground, we can, year in and year out, we can make a crop. So, that's just the comments I have, you know, you're just going to make a decision, I'm just giving you my perspective, and that's what I was asking to do, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Lassiter?
Thank you, sir. My name is Ben Lassiter, I'm a 10-year, I'm relatively short timer, 10-year resident in Macon County, live in the Tessentie area, south of the county. I'm a natural resource professional by training, wildlife ecologist by training, and I'm fortunate to be able to live, work, and play, as many of us are in this valley and along this river. But today, I bring you some comments submitted by Dr. Jerry Miller, who is a professor at Western Carolina University, fellow scientist, if you will. Where I got my PhD studying wildlife ecology, Dr. Miller is a hydrologist and geomorphologist. All he does is study this stuff, as far as the interactions of the river, its floodplain, and how people impact that. And in the interest of time, I will, I will just cover parts of what I've handed out to you guys. Dr. Miller writes, "Let me start by apologizing for not being able to attend this afternoon's meeting. I thank the board for allowing my comments to be read. Although I'm a professor, professor at Western Carolina University, it's important to recognize that my comments do not reflect the view of the university or any of the departments or programs I'm associated with. These comments only reflect my view on the use of fill on floodplains. I'm currently a hydrologist and geomorphologist who specializes in the study of water quality and the potential impacts of human activities on rivers. Several issues I believe the planning board may wish to consider when evaluating changes in the county's floodplain ordinance. First, from a hydrological perspective, floodplain serve as important and necessary part of a river's hydrological system. During high rainfall events, floodwaters top the riverbanks and inundate the floodplain where the water's stored until after the rainfall slows or stops. Water on the floodplain then slowly makes its way back down into the river over a period of hours or days. The temporary storage of water on the floodplain reduces the overall height and magnitude of flooding along the river valley. It also helps to slow the velocity of water and reduces the potential amount of erosion or sediment deposition that occurs. Any activity such as the addition of fill on the floodplain surface that alters the water holding capacity of the floodplain will increase downstream flood flows in terms of both its height and its ability to erode, transport, and deposit sediment. Previous studies have shown that both fill leads to enhanced downstream flooding, higher rates of bank erosion and property loss, and significant deposition of sediment on the floodplain surface. Changes in these processes can be dramatic. In fact, studies have shown that properties, homes, businesses, et cetera, that have been affected by flood events may suddenly be prone to inundation after floodplain filling and development occur. Such floodplain alterations have led to significant litigation as downstream property owners seek reparations from flooding or property, property loss, which they had not previously experienced. It's important to note that the developers are not the only group of stakeholders who are held accountable by the courts. A review of past floodplain liability cases by the Association of Floodplain Managers notes that, quote, "Courts have often held governments liable for increasing flood or erosion hazards on adjacent lands by filling or grading land. When injuries occur, private landowners and other members of the public increasingly sue governments for economic flood damages and in some instances, pain and suffering." The same applies to floodplain filling. It's also clear that the courts have made it easier in recent years for downstream property owners to take legal action and to succeed. And finally, a potential exists for toxic substances to be leached from the fill during precipitation event and carried into ground and river waters. In Macon County, a potential problem that may arise is the introduction of toxic trace elements, metals such as lead, cadmium, copper, nickel, and zinc in the surface and groundwater. These trace metals are often concentrated in bedrock. If these minerals are excavated and used for fill, trace metals can then be released into the surrounding water while simultaneously creating acid runoff. Perhaps one of the most used, often used examples of this process has been the excavation of the Anachesta Formation during road construction. Many of us have heard hot rock being exposed when the blast clips. The exposure of pyrite or fool's gold creates that acid runoff and trace metal releases significant enough to cause fish kills in nearby waters, and it's not much of a stretch of the imagination to think about that happening in the course of floodplain fill. In summary, I'll go back to Dr. Miller's comments. In summary, floodplain filling may lead to hydrologic, ecological, and geochemical channelings along streams and rivers that may adversely affect local property owners and riverine ecosystems. I urge caution when considering any changes to the existing floodplain ordinance. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ms. Tinsley?
I'm Kathy Tinsley, and I live out in Cartugia and have all my life, and I just speak to two points that I know best and maybe have affected me the most, but other people have said it more eloquently. My interest is agriculture. Some of our most, our richest and most fertile soils are found in the bottom lands near our creeks, I think we all know that. And agriculture's alive and well in Macon County. It may not look like it used to look with 50 or so dairy farms, but we've got a lot of young people that are looking forward to farming and going into either hay and crop production or row cropping. Preserving these soils for generations to come ensures a place for producing food for people, as Kenneth and Butch have said. So, maintaining good fertile areas for agriculture is one of my concerns. I've also lived by Cartugia Creek all my life, and it doesn't even take a flood event to see that it changes and it's a dynamic system. Every spring you walk out, that creek has changed somewhere. We've had more frequent and more severe storms, and scientists here have spoken more to that than I will, but I do know that what I do on my property can affect the inlows and the shoaks, and what Harold might do up on the Killian property can affect us, and so I think this, this really does deserve some deep thought before something as major as taking this portion out is done. So, I would urge you to please maintain this prohibition against fill in the floodplain. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
I'm Sharon Taylor, I live in the Rose Creek community, I'm from Macon County, but I'm here today not as an individual, representing the Land Trust for the Little Tennessee. The Land Trust for Little Tennessee is a 400-member organization, conservation organization based out of Franklin, and I spoke last month, and I'm not going to repeat that letter, but I just want to reiterate that the Land Trust for Little Tennessee urges this board to please keep the restrictions in place that are now in respect of the rights of all property owners, and I'm not going to try to speak to what the scientists have already said, we just feel like that this is a, that we are, Macon County's really setting a standard here, and we urge the planning board to consider that, keep those restrictions in place, and protect our floodplain, protect our farmland.
Thank you. Ms. Walbrook?
My name is Betty Walbrook, and I did write something down because I was afraid I'd get nervous and forget what I wanted to say. My family owns, I live in the Rose Creek, and my family owns property on the Manaho River that is used for agricultural purposes, hay, corn, and livestock. I'm here because of my concern about what happens to property owners downstream when the floodplain is filled and the floodway is disrupted, especially during high water or flood events. The pictures that I'm passing around were taken in January, when we had the major rain event, and that's mild compared to what happened in 2004 when Ivan and Francis came through. Property rights are everyone's. No one should be allowed to change stream characteristics if that change can have a negative impact on adjoining property owner's rights. If everyone filtered their plans through a filter that considered impact to the common good, then there would be no need for regulation. Unfortunately, lots of people only filter from a standpoint of what they individually want to, to the detriment of everyone else. Driven by greed or selfishness or whatever, some people do not consider or do not care about the impact their actions have on others. That is why we need these regulations, to protect farmland, homes, and individuals from potentially devastating outcomes. My issue is minor, yet it affects how we use our property. Several years ago, a bridge was built across the Manaho River about 50 feet above our property lot. In order to raise the bridge to correct for offsetting banks on the river, fill had to be brought in. This was before there was an ordinance. Normally, day-to-day life is fine. Bridge construction and fill constricts the water somewhat and increases the velocity of the flow downstream, but there is negligible impact to our property. However, when we have a significant rain event or flood, the water cannot flow through the constricted area. Therefore, it flows around it and creates a new floodway that flows directly across our horse pasture and hayfield, carrying rocks and debris with it. We have adapted to that. When it floods, we move the horses to a neighbor's barn. We should not have to do that. Neither should other people who own property on a waterway have to accommodate because of someone else's actions. Please vote to protect the people of Macon County by maintaining the floodplain ordinance.
Metter?
My name is Jason Metter, I'm living in the Otto Community. I want to spare you guys, and I apologize to you guys, I smell like a pair of wet waders, which speaks to my background. I'm a fish biologist, all this week I've been out with eighth graders in the Macon County In addition to being a fish biologist, I'm also an avid outdoorsman, so I spend a great deal of my time, both business and pleasure, in the streams. Historically throughout the world, we have abused our floodplains. In many cities, including Franklin downtown, downtowns are built on top of floodplains or completely built in. Over time, as human population has grown, we have learned what's wrong with this and this way of thinking as far as future development. We're probably not going to move Pittsburgh, but we can profit from earlier mistakes. This is a large part of what motivated Macon County to adopt the floodplain ordinance to begin with. Our floodplain ordinance leaves plenty of room for debate, debate as far as how it should be applied. This is good, and it's, there's every reason to be able to discuss how individual floodplain parcels can be used, what can or should be planted or built within the floodplain. Floodplain filling is a distinct case. When you propose to fill a floodplain area, there's no longer discussion about use, it's a question of circumventing the ordinance by eliminating an inconveniently located portion of the floodplain. This is a direct attack on the logic which is in essence who are fixing the math. Now, when I'm, when I'm out working, collecting fish, I run across a lot of landowners, many times that they always want to tell me about what their neighbor upstream has done and how it's impacted their property, and I'm not an agent, I'm not, I don't work with an agency, I cannot regulate anything, I'm no, I'm no enforcement whatsoever, but I do have to listen to the issues and their impacts, and there are a lot of impacts out there. So, the main principle which applies, and we've already heard before, for every action, there's equal and opposite reaction. This applies also to water. When you fill a portion of the floodplain, you're removing that area from the floodplain at least until a large enough flood comes along and decides to reclaim it. Call me cynical, call me cynical, but if we allow filling of the floodplain, I foresee the near future of neighbor turning against neighbor because the first person downstream that chooses not to fill, or cannot afford to fill their area of the floodplain, will be impacted negatively. If you're going to remove the prohibition on floodplain filling, you better strike the whole ordinance and abandon the pretense of trying to protect the floodplain, the downstream residents, and the infrastructure, the river, and the common good. We know enough at this point in time to say that filling in floodplains should only be allowed in the most extraordinary of circumstances, not merely to convenience perhaps, an otherwise worthy project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Foster?
Good afternoon, and thanks for having us here and allowing us to provide some comments. My name is Steve Foster, I'm a resident of the Cartugia Community, I live on the little tributary of Cartugia Creek. By way of background, I am a stream scientist, I have worked in water resources management and hydrology since the mid-1970s. I'm the founder and principal owner of Watershed Science, Inc., a local consulting company, and a former research faculty at NC State's Biological and Agricultural Engineering Department. We've had some great comments here today about how filling in the floodplain affects upstream flooding, downstreams, excuse me, downstream scour, the velocities, the whole nine yards, but I want to add a slightly different perspective to this for your consideration as well. I want you to consider the fact that the floodplain is actually part of the stream channel, okay? It's formed and maintained by the stream along which that floodplain resides, and it functions critically as a very important component of that stream. Does two things. It transports the water that's yielded by its watershed and the sediment that's yielded by its watershed at a time in which the discharge of that stream increases to the point where the principal component of the channel can no longer carry those volumes and velocities, okay? Now, as we see development occur throughout the United States, throughout the world, there is one critical result of that, and that is the increase of impervious surface in the watershed that's being developed. It doesn't matter whether we're talking about a new shopping center, a new subdivision, a new roadway, anywhere man's footprint comes along, we're increasing those hardened surfaces such as rooftops, driveways, basketball courts, parks, parking lots, you name it, that do two things. They decrease infiltration of rainwater and increase runoff, okay? So, as we increase this imperviousness, the general characteristic is for runoff from that watershed to increase. As that happens, the frequency of flooding increases as well as the stage elevation associated with any given event. It doesn't matter whether we're talking about the 10-year, 24-hour type 2 storm, the 25-year, 12-hour type 1 storm, in any given storm, with increased imperviousness, the stage of that flooding increases as well as the frequency with which that flooding occurs, That's important to remember because there's plenty of historical records of communities that have allowed not only relatively uncontrolled development, because quite frankly, we've learned as we've gone along, but allowing development and allowing fill in the floodplains has resulted in the need to come back and reevaluate, reevaluate those flood hazard areas and the floodplain elevations. There are plenty of historical records where communities have come back and had to reevaluate flood elevations only to find that the reevaluated 10-year flood elevation flood elevations, only to find that the reevaluated 10-year flood elevation is higher than the previous 50-year elevation, okay? Communities have been put in the position where they've had to buy homes and sections of subwatersheds in order to manage the flooding after development and floodplain fill. So, the combination of those effects would make floodplain protection even more critical as we develop any of these watersheds in our area, right? Sort of makes sense. So, any fill is not only going to cause energy dissipation issues, it's not only going to cause flooding issues, it's not only going to cause scour issues downstream, but it's potentially going to become a component in how, where, and when we have to reevaluate flood elevations, which then affects the National Flood Insurance Program, whether or not we've got rainwater coming into the front door of the house, and all sorts of I've been doing this a long time, and I'm convinced that wherever mankind takes a step, we are part of the problem, okay? We're all part of the problem. We're all potentially part of the solution, though, when it comes to our natural resources, okay? I think it's also critical that we consider that how you live up to that potential defines who you are. Let's live up to that potential, let's don't allow fill in the floodplains, and let's protect those resources for the future. Thank you.
I'm Deborah Sloan with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. I live in the Teleco section in Macon County, and I'm here with a prepared statement from Mr. Bill Yarborough. Many of you know him as a regional agronomist. A lot of whom reference to him. He's also the special assistant to my commissioner of agriculture, Steve Troxley. I appreciate this opportunity, and this is a good closing. Rare in nature and formed at a geological pace over thousands of years, prime soils in western North Carolina and east Tennessee are exceptionally precious resource. Less than 2% of the landmass in the Appalachian mountain chain is made up of prime soils. Prime soils are formed by factors such as freezing and thawing, erosion, gravity, and flooding, forming terrace deposits of black gold in our valleys. Many of the prime soils in western North Carolina and eastern Tennessee are centered on the relationship between our mountains and our river systems. What makes a prime soil prime? Soils are classified by their limiting factors. The soils that have the fewest limiting factors are prime soils. Limiting factors are aspects of the soil that limit crop growth and include having too much sand or too much clay, too much slope, being too hot, too cold, too dry, too wet, too rocky, or too high in elevation. Man-made influences such as pavement or pollution can also be limiting factors on soil. Prime soils are characterized by a balance ratio of sand, silt, and clay. These soils are deep and not rocky, and there must be adequate moisture. Prime soils can be planted every for loss of productivity when farmed with care. We have this exceptional resource, yet we have so little of it. Much of it in our region has been paved over, built on, filled in to make room for our modern infrastructure. For example, over 80% of the prime soils in Haywood County have been lost to development since the early 1980s. If Haywood County started out with 2% collection of prime soils, it currently has 0.4% collection of this resource. When Bill Yarborough speaks about prime soils, he likes to remind us about Ed Wood of North Carolina, who took second place in the 2010 National Corn Growers Association, growing 287 bushels of corn per acre on a Roslyn series soil in Cherokee County. The Cherokee Indians farmed these soils for thousands of years, says Bill. We can continue to farm them and benefit from the soils if we take care of them and hold them in high regard. Thank you very much.
I'm Harold Heskison, living in the Carduga J Community. Blessed to have been born and raised in Macon County, and I'm thankful to my God for As a kid growing up, I got to see the sladelers and kids farming land in Macon County. Our family had a small place on Poplar Cove, and I got to see agriculture in our community and how important it was at that time. There is a balance. So many people my age, a little older, a little younger, had to move away from here. So, development has enabled some of us to stay here. Being in insurance, there's no question that my family has been blessed with the homes, industries that have come to our area. Again, I think there's a balance. There has to be a balance in the way we utilize our land, farmland, and Macon County now is premium. We've got more interest in farming today than I've seen maybe in several years. I've got two sons that seem to be very interested in it, and I am as well. As I think about this, I don't have the knowledge that so many of you bring to this table and the facts. I've been very impressed today with the information that's been brought out that is scientific and is so supportive. What I would like to bring would be the idea or the concept of a golden rule that says I should do unto my neighbor as I would have my neighbor do unto me. If we humans could self-govern, you wouldn't be where you're at. Our nation founded by a group of men that realized we need government. I don't like some of the things that come with government, but it's important. What you're doing is so very important for we, the people. And we have to have sound judgments made on your part so that all of us can enjoy Macon County and these United States to a level that we can do the things we want to do without adversely impacting other people and have that science show us. Don't think there's any way we can deny that we need growth in Macon County. I've pointed out several times, the world needs agriculture. We've got to have it, and I think the future in agriculture is very promising because this world population is growing. And as a farmer, I think in the next 20 years, I'm going to have an opportunity to help feed this world and maybe be able to make a better living and farm. It's important that we preserve our farmland as best we can. I am so thankful that there's farm families that's been able to hold on to their property, which pointed out could have been sold for much more profit, decided to keep it. I appreciate your thoughts and endeavor to help preserve the surrounding area and realize that there has to be a balance. Some property can be used for development, and some should not be. Again, I think government infringes on us, but it protects us all. And I think it's very important that we Americans realize we've got to have it, and we are just responsible for ourselves and responsible forever, for every person in here and every person in Macon County. Thank you for letting me speak. I'd like to...
Anybody? Any other public comment? Anyone? If not, we'll close the public comment portionally for me. Everyone on the planning board appreciates everyone coming. We appreciate you being here and appreciate what you have to say. Does anybody on the board have any comments to table up today?
I have an email somebody sent me, and it couldn't be used today. I'd like to read it for them. I got a call around lunchtime, and this individual asked me to do this. To whom it may concern, one of the more interesting books that I've written, Collapse, by Jared Diamond, investigates why various populations across flooding and a parish. In every case, it calls with the inability of the population to feed themselves and have forest lands with which to sustainably harvest lumber with which to construct housing and to have the biodiversity necessary for insects such as bees to live and provide pollination for food troughs. Modern lands throughout the mountains in the U.S. in general are where all our food comes from. To the extent that those lands are filled and built upon, that land is lost forever. And as is well-known and thoroughly documented, pinching a river not only increases the severity of upstream flooding, but then also increases the downstream velocity of water, thus causing more erosion and downstream damage. Filling in floodplains should not be allowed. Its short-run benefits are far outweighed by the negative long-term consequences, respectfully to Steve Whitmer.
One other sort of addition to the comments that were made, and it's on the property rights issue. To me, when you have existing uses, permitted uses, traditional uses, those are sort of of a different order of importance from somebody wanting to add a use to their property that's not even possible, given the original condition of that property. If you've been farming land for hundreds of years, if you've built a house five years ago in compliance with our existing ordinance, and you have a current use that is going to be negatively impacted because somebody wants to add a use, they want to change the nature of their property and use it for something that it has not been able to be used for, that to me is an inferior right to the rights of those who are using the land in its natural state and are currently using it. So, I would just like to add that to the property rights discussion.
Any other comments? Last meeting, we asked Matt to gather some information for us. I talked to Gerald Green, the county planner in Jackson County, and we talked for 30 minutes about fill and floodplain. Jackson County allows fill and floodplain, and Gerald stated that allowing fill and floodplain is obviously that way. So, I think Jimmy, you'd ask me to ask you about public safety issues in relation to that, and they have currently not had any public safety issues in regard to coinciding fill and floodplain. But he did want to make it clear about something that Jackson County is doing is they do allow fill and floodplain, but they currently encourage or trying to encourage and promote new and existing agriculture through their agricultural board. They think agriculture is a hot topic in the future. They revised their voluntary ag district, just like we've done, and they've also provided some additional tax incentives and stuff like that to promote agriculture as part of the floodplain issue. Then I talked to Tommy a little bit about it with the EDC, and they didn't have a meeting last month. They're going to have one in May, and I'm going to try and get with him to discuss economic impact versus agricultural development and the impact that that can bring versus agricultural economic impact and see if it's... You know where we're at? It's in the last meeting part of public comment, our information that Matt brought forward. See if anybody got any thoughts on where to proceed, any thoughts on the changes.
I was talking to Mark lately. He said it was in the floodplain.
I talked to Justin Setzer again this week on that. The GIS data will not allow you to take total acreage that's just in the floodplain in terms of whether agricultural or present. There was... We did some estimations on it. I think 4700 agricultural acreage in Macon County that have floodplain on the property, floodplain, special flood hazard issues on the property. And Justin said, just looking at the maps, rough estimates, that would be about 2300 to 2700 acres would be agricultural in a flood hazard area.
About half.
Yeah. Roughly about 50. It would actually be in the floodplain.
And that's a third of the total acreage in Macon County floodplain. Is that right?
By estimate.
A third of the total acreage in the county?
Just about 8,000 acres.
Well, there were 67 acres that were in the floodplain.
I mean...
I think it was 6,700.
In the floodplain.
In the plain.
Yeah, then there's 2,000 of the floodplain, sort of 8,000 flood hazard area. So, you're almost 700.
And then of that, how much of that was public?
Well, as far as the farm goes, it's classified as agriculture usage that we publicly did. Publicity should have known on the GIS. There was some properties throughout the state of North Carolina, Duke County, Town Franklin, Town Hall, we threw those out, except land trust. The most of your government land, public land, is not mapped, so it's not considered as part of that. It's not a significant amount. It's not part of this 8700 acres. The only piece that wouldn't be used in Macon County.
There's only about 800 acres in...
That's total acreage.
Lake of Kenan. Neakon was about 4,000, 3200 or something.
And that, of course, all... We don't want to call 800 of them as part of the...
Well, it's not. It's not.
So, that 2700, if you change back, proceeding, even if you check and add, it's part of that 800 back.
And that's 2700 acres, we've heard today. I mean, those are more likely than building them there. And they're obviously against the fill process. At least the people that were here today. So, that's 2700 acres. In theory, they'd be safe.
What would be impacted by that?
That's not what I said, though. I said they're safe from their own fill.
Yeah.
Well, they're... They'll fall out. So, they're racial.
Fall out with the other...
That's what I'd like to hear, kind of what the EDC had to say about that. That the EDC had to... That's what the plan would have, because like Mr. Dill was saying, when you've got land that's been in your family for 50 or 60 years, and you farmed it, and by farming it, that's how you feed your family. I mean, that's how you're providing for your family. And because it's something I've done on my property upstream, now if that affects your property and you're no longer able to carry on your way of livelihood and put food on your table, then I've affected your rights in your property. But at the same token, if I've got property and it's been in my family for 50 years and I want to fill it and sell it, then I can feed my family with that money too, and it's, you know, whereas the golden rule is a great...
And it's, you know, whereas the golden rule is, is a great valid point that was, that was brought up today. And, you know, if my golden, if the golden rule is, if I feel that the way that I should do unto others is that they should maximize to the fullest everything that's available, all their resources and be all they can be. That's how I want everybody to be. Then I think that those two scenarios that you play out basically cancel out the property rights argument. Being as the effect that I have on Mr. Dill's property rights is just as important as the right for me, if I wanted to, to fill my property and, and put homes on it if it was in the floodplain. So, that's why I think that we should look and focus the argument on other merits like the economic development impact that it will have. Or we've had safety issues been brought to the table and issues with sedimentation that's been brought to the table. I remember a lot of time driving around, me and Matt, when we were sort of at the counter and seeing these little creeks when it was raining coming out of the subdivisions. And, you know, it'd be like, dang, but there used to be a speck of trout in there. But, you know, and that's what, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I think that because of that, property rights, I mean, it's always a hot, a hot topic. But I think you get what I'm saying, that it should be kind of.
Do you not think at all that the existing uses and traditional uses have any stronger validity than somebody changing the whole use of their property and affecting people?
Well, that's an opinion. I mean, it's, it's whatever the law allows is what's right. And I, not necessarily always what's right, but the law of land is what we live by. And if the law has changed to where it now allows me to fill in the floodplain, I think I got just as much right as anybody filling the floodplain. But I, I do think the economic development impact is a big factor that needs to be looked at. Exactly how much land we're talking about, the potential that it could have for citizens in Macon County. Because at the end of the day, we're looking out for Macon County.
Uh, it would, it would seem that the economic impact would be such that if that property's filled and sold, it would be a one-time economic impact. If that property is in agricultural use, then it would be a continual annually, hopefully. Of course, it's like the practice of being a farmer, but hopefully it would be annual economic benefit.
You say that, but if that property was filled and sold and a factory put in on it or a corporate center of sorts put on, then it's a continuous economic impact.
Or get money, or whatever happened. And it would be, it would visit, I've got, you've got it.
Man, go back to last one, I guess, Mark, you tell, we're only talking about fill and fill, right? I mean, tell me, can you go through the scenario about the foot? You were talking about scraping up dirt within the floodplain? Well, tell, go back, I miss something there.
Well, you're not stopping development of the floodplain, you just have to construct accordingly.
Right, but we're, tell me, again, what did you say about getting dirt off your property in floodplain that I'm misunderstanding?
We can do, I mean, you can do that now.
Within the floodplain.
Right, but go ahead and tell me about that. Start from scratch, I won't be sure.
Okay, I'll try.
All right, so I've got an acre here and I have some foot in the floodplain.
Right.
Push up, try to.
You can.
Now, okay.
But you can't go up on the non-floodplain and put water.
It's got to balance, you know, if you, if you, if you need to move dirt around, you can move it from one place to the other as long as you go from in the floodplain and stays in the floodplain. You can't bring it from out of the floodplain.
And I can't push it up on the hill into the floodplain, even though it's all mine.
If you wanted to elevate a roadway or something like that, by moving dirt in the floodplain, you could.
Yeah, and there's some provision for incidental field that are incidentals to actual purpose and project. Forward driveway, culvert, you know.
Okay, assuming I, maybe an acre is all the examples, suppose I got five acres. If I've got enough dirt, I can fill that five things as long as I'm pushing it.
As long as it bounce, yeah.
Yeah, as long as I'm pushing it from inside the floodplain back up to make some of the land higher.
I don't know that you can do that, Mark. Mark's asking if he can take this floodplain dirt out of the floodplain and change the volume of the floodplain by moving this dirt out.
Take it out of the floodplain?
That's what Mark wants to do.
What am I gonna be able to do? I mean, that's why I guess I'm not really clear. I wrote down here, I, say I've got five acres, that's probably a better, better example than one acre because you might have some ability to move the dirt around. What can I do today?
If you've got five acres along the river, you could take, say you've got a thousand feet down the river or something. You'd take half of that, take the dirt out of it, put it up on the other part and raise it up. You wouldn't be changing the volume in the floodplain.
Your storage volume would be the same.
But you're bringing part of it up to, out of the floodplain.
Well, that's what, yeah.
But you can't take that dirt from in the floodplain out of the floodplain.
And you can't take the dirt from the hill into the floodplain.
That's right. That dirt can't cross that imaginary line.
That's not true.
That's what the ordinance says.
No, the ordinance says you can't bring dirt into the floodplain.
For the purposes of.
Of fill. It does not say you cannot take dirt out of the floodplain for any other reason. Excuse me, but it does not say that. And it is, well, exactly what Matt said, is try to achieve a balance so that the volume in the reservoir is the same.
Right, so. My lord, I'm lower in part of my floodplain property, is that what they say?
Yeah, you're lowering part and raising part.
But in the end, the volume of water that would be held by your property is the same.
Should be the same.
Is the same, yeah. That, that's under the current ordinance. And what, what these proposed changes are would be to allow you to either bring some dirt from your property that's out of the floodplain or.
Off some.
Often for me, a dump down there in the floodplain. And the whole, I think the concern is that when you do that, you change the volume of water that your property is able to hold as a reservoir when the water back that much.
I think there's one issue here that we need to think about too. That the way it is now discriminates really against any commercial development floodplain. Because presidential development, you can build it on scale since it works pretty good.
Actually, it's probably safer than trying to move what dirt in.
Yeah, but if you want to do something from a commercial development, it'd be hard to do.
It does, it's, right now, it currently impacts commercial development.
Yeah, more than anything.
But a commercial development is going to go in and say, look at the numbers. I mean, they want to know what it's gonna cost, am I gonna make money, blah, blah, blah. They're gonna go to a floodplain and say, I ain't building there, it's gonna cost me too much.
That or the insurance is.
So, they're already prohibited from the floodplain just by the natural case of business.
Well, there's been a lot, a lot of commercial property in Franklin that's been filled in and made commercial property by filling in.
But we're talking about the county more, not the city.
Well, I know that, but there's places out in county you can do that too. Down in Georgia Road, there's a lot of places.
So, what you're saying, Jimmy, is it's basically on, take care of itself because.
As cause of the commercial aspect, uh, cause of the commercial aspect.
Well, I think that's true, yeah.
So, I mean, I don't think that there will ever be any commercial building in the floodplain whatsoever just because they don't want us to be willing to do it.
Well, a lot of buildings are too, a lot of.
Insurance. Yeah, you know, filling up their building with water when it floods. I mean, I just, I don't see any commercial building in the floodplain in Macon County whatsoever now.
There's plenty of commercial property for sale that's open to the year.
Yeah. And the Little Tennessee Watershed Association has taken over quite a bit of property themselves to conserve that, is that correct?
Well, we tried to consign some floodplain, that's absolutely.
But you've bought a lot of.
But not nearly the percentage of it.
But down, down the Georgia Road, how much land do y'all own?
We don't own any, we transferred that to Wildlife Blends and so.
But it's preserved.
It's preserved, that's right, but it's only, I can't remember, sixty acres maybe? It's very little frontage.
I just don't see any commercial development in the floodplain.
I said, even if we pass this and allow to fill in in the floodplain, I don't see a whole lot of that being done in the near future. Because it costs a lot of money to fill that, unless there's a good reason for it, it would be done.
In the planning board training workshop we went to in November, I think this is something we need to keep in mind. They were reminding us that when you regulate something, you should never do it on the basis of responding to an individual situation. Well, would it hurt for these people to build this parking lot? Would it hurt for these people to build this building here? You have to do it for all the properties affected. That it's supposed to be a consistent regulation that applies to everything. That you don't just kind of guess what, you know, might or might not come. And this one might be good and that one might be bad. We know that a lot of fill in the floodplain is bad. And we can say, well, maybe not much will happen because it costs too much. But as a planning board, our regulations are supposed to be consistent with the whole situation, not with one or two hypothetical cases where we might or might not think that would be okay.
I have a couple of things. I happen to live on Cowee Creek on the low side of the creek. So, when you're getting, the creek runs like an S in front of my house. But it goes through my garden and it washes out the middle of the garden. So, how am I supposed to get my dirt back up into the middle of the garden and make it level? Because most of my dirt, say Mark lives on his five acres right next door, my dirt's on his five acres and I move it back home.
You're gonna raise the mine grass. That's where you get your fur, I'm gonna sell it back to you.
But I happen right now, it's giving, you know, but I cannot grow in the middle a good portion of the garden because it's washed out. And it even comes back the other way. So, I feel like I'm at this advantage of not being able to at least put dirt back where dirt was after. And it's practically washed the whole section out and we can't fill it. So, some of these days it's gonna be right in front of the porch.
Well, that's a, that's a good point. If currently, if, if, if I have some property in the floodplain and we have it blessed and, and there's, I'm just making that up now, with five thousand cubic yards of dirt that's displaced from my bottom which would go down tomorrow, pile up. So, currently, the way the regulation is written, do I have any, can I, can I fill that dirt back in that floodplain that was removed by that turn?
As long as you have an approved plan from NRCS or SLM or.
Please take it back to the original.
It might not be the same dirt, but you could, as long as it's not approved.
You shouldn't fill it, you only fill it to the same elevation.
You fill it back just like it was or you can just over it.
So, you can go through a stream bank restoration program.
Or agricultural.
Agricultural program and get it back.
Maybe your dirt's gonna be in the floodway. If it's getting washed away, it's in the floodway, it's on the floodplain.
Anything you do with it.
Anything you can do about it. This, this discussion's about the floodplain, not the floodway. And I think there's a lot of misunderstanding based even what I heard from the public today about bridges in the flood, in the floodway. And this isn't about fill in the floodway, this is about the floodplain. Where we don't have the losses like you're describing. I can think of other people in the river who have lost land in the floodway. They can't do a thing about it. But that's not what this discussion is about, it's about the floodplain.
Fill the floodplain and push up, try to.
You can.
Now, okay.
But you can't go up on the non-floodplain and put water.
It's got to balance, you know, if you, if you, if you need to move dirt around, you can move it from one place to the other as long as you go from in the floodplain and stays in the floodplain. You can't bring it from out of the floodplain and put it in the floodplain.
And I can't push it up on the hill into the floodplain, even though it's all mine.
If you wanted to elevate a roadway or something like that, by moving dirt in the floodplain, you could.
Yeah, and there's some provision for incidental field that are incidentals to actual purpose and project. Forward driveway, culvert, you know.
Okay, assuming I, maybe an acre is all the examples, suppose I got five acres. If I've got enough dirt, I can fill that five things as long as I'm pushing it.
As long as it bounce, yeah.
Yeah, as long as I'm pushing it from inside the floodplain back up to make some of the land higher.
I don't know that you can do that, Mark. Mark's asking if he can take this floodplain dirt out of the floodplain and change the volume of the floodplain by moving this dirt out.
Take it out of the floodplain?
That's what Mark wants to do.
What am I gonna be able to do? I mean, that's why I guess I'm not really clear. I wrote down here, I, say I've got five acres, that's probably a better, better example than one acre because you might have some ability to move the dirt around. What can I do today?
If you've got five acres along the river, you could take, say you've got a thousand feet down the river or something. You'd take half of that, take the dirt out of it, put it up on the other part and raise it up. You wouldn't be changing the volume in the floodplain.
Your storage volume would be the same.
But you're bringing part of it up to, out of the floodplain.
Well, that's what, yeah.
But you can't take that dirt from in the floodplain out of the floodplain.
And you can't take the dirt from the hill into the floodplain.
That's right. That dirt can't cross that imaginary line.
That's not true.
That's what the ordinance says.
No, the ordinance says you can't bring dirt into the floodplain.
For the purposes of.
Of fill. It does not say you cannot take dirt out of the floodplain for any other reason. Excuse me, but it does not say that. And it is, well, exactly what Matt said, is try to achieve a balance so that the volume in the reservoir is the same.
Right, so. My lord, I'm lower in part of my floodplain property, is that what they say?
Yeah, you're lowering part and raising part.
But in the end, the volume of water that would be held by your property is the same.
Should be the same.
Is the same, yeah. That, that's under the current ordinance. And what, what these proposed changes are would be to allow you to either bring some dirt from your property that's out of the floodplain or.
Off some.
Often for me, a dump down there in the floodplain. And the whole, I think the concern is that when you do that, you change the volume of water that your property is able to hold as a reservoir when the water back that much.
I think there's one issue here that we need to think about too. That the way it is now discriminates really against any commercial development floodplain. Because presidential development, you can build it on scale since it works pretty good.
Actually, it's probably safer than trying to move what dirt in.
Yeah, but if you want to do something from a commercial development, it'd be hard to do.
It does, it's, right now, it currently impacts commercial development.
Yeah, more than anything.
But a commercial development is going to go in and say, look at the numbers. I mean, they want to know what it's gonna cost, am I gonna make money, blah, blah, blah. They're gonna go to a floodplain and say, I ain't building there, it's gonna cost me too much.
That or the insurance is.
So, they're already prohibited from the floodplain just by the natural case of business.
Well, there's been a lot, a lot of commercial property in Franklin that's been filled in and made commercial property by filling in.
But we're talking about the county more, not the city.
Well, I know that, but there's places out in county you can do that too. Down in Georgia Road, there's a lot of places.
So, what you're saying, Jimmy, is it's basically on, take care of itself because.
As cause of the commercial aspect, uh, cause of the commercial aspect.
Well, I think that's true, yeah.
So, I mean, I don't think that there will ever be any commercial building in the floodplain whatsoever just because they don't want us to be willing to do it.
Well, a lot of buildings are too, a lot of.
Insurance. Yeah, you know, filling up their building with water when it floods. I mean, I just, I don't see any commercial building in the floodplain in Macon County whatsoever now.
There's plenty of commercial property for sale that's open to the year.
Yeah. And the Little Tennessee Watershed Association has taken over quite a bit of property themselves to conserve that, is that correct?
Well, we tried to consign some floodplain, that's absolutely.
But you've bought a lot of.
But not nearly the percentage of it.
But down, down the Georgia Road, how much land do y'all own?
We don't own any, we transferred that to Wildlife Blends and so.
But it's preserved.
It's preserved, that's right, but it's only, I can't remember, sixty acres maybe? It's very little frontage.
I just don't see any commercial development in the floodplain.
I said, even if we pass this and allow to fill in in the floodplain, I don't see a whole lot of that being done in the near future. Because it costs a lot of money to fill that, unless there's a good reason for it, it would be done.
In the planning board training workshop we went to in November, I think this is something we need to keep in mind. is something we need to keep in mind, they were reminding us that when you regulate something, you should never do it on the basis of responding to an individual situation. Well, would it hurt for these people to build this parking lot or would it hurt for these people to build this building here? You have to do it for all the properties affected. That it's supposed to be a consistent regulation that applies to everything. That you don't just kind of guess what, you know, might or might not come and this one might be good and that one might be bad. We know that a lot of fill in the floodplain is bad. And we can say, well, maybe not much will happen because it costs too much. But as a planning board, our regulations are supposed to be consistent with the whole situation, not with one or two hypothetical cases where we might or might not think that would be okay.
I have, I have a couple of things. I happen to live on Cowee Creek, on the low side of the creek. So when you're getting, the creek runs like a S in front of my house. But it goes through my garden and it washes out the middle of the garden. So how am I supposed to get my dirt back up into the middle of the garden to make it level? Because most of my dirt, say Mark lives on his five acres right next door, my dirt's on his five acres and I'm gonna back off.
You were gonna say, "All right, mine grass." That's where you get your fur. I'm gonna sell it back to you.
But I happen right now is getting to the point that I cannot grow in the middle a good portion of the garden because it's washed out. And it even becomes back the other way. So I feel like that I'm at a disadvantage by not being able to at least put dirt back or dirt was after. And it's practically washed the whole section out and we can't fill it. So some of these days it's gonna be right up under the porch.
That's, that's a good point. If currently, if, if I have some property in the floodplain and we have a flood and there's, I'm just making that number, 5,000 cubic yards of dirt is displaced from my bottom, which is gonna go down in the muck pile up. So currently, the way the regulation is written, do I have any, can I, can I fill that dirt back in that floodplain that was removed by that charge?
As long as you have an approved plan from NRCS at Soulmark or approved from NRCS.
So you can take it back to its original.
Is there a comment?
It might not be the same dirt, but you can, as long as it's designed and approved.
You shouldn't fill it. You always fill it to the same elevation.
You fill it back just like it was or you can store it.
So you can go through a stream bank restoration program.
Or agricultural program.
Or agricultural program and get it back.
Maybe your dirt's gonna be in the floodway. If it's getting washed away, it's in the floodway. It's on the floodplain.
And then you do it.
Anything you can do about it. This, this discussion's about the floodplain, not the floodway. And I think there's a lot of misunderstanding based even what I heard from the public today about bridges in the flood, in the floodway. And this isn't about fill in the floodway. This is about the floodplain. Where we don't have the velocities like you're describing. I can think of other people on the river who have lost land in the floodway. They can't do a thing about it. But that's not what this discussion's about. It's about the floodplain.
Very good point.
The other, the other thing is, commercial property along 441. I lived down there my entire life. And I have seen water completely over 441 up into the right-hand side along the cross from the river all the way to the river. And they've put in all those businesses there and put in 10, 15-foot field dirt in places. Well, that pushed the water over down the river okay. And not too much of it went across the river to the Alexander's Pastures over there. And we've got several miles of flooded field dirt along 441. But I haven't seen any real damage done to it during the process of the years. Maybe a little year or layer. The biggest thing is, this property is selling good through that area. And when this new ordinance come in that they couldn't do any field dirt, their property value's dropped almost 100% or more. Say you're getting $100,000 acre, now you'd be lucky to get 10.
I think that's, that's an economic factor. But you've got to also look at, too, if Mark's developed along 441 was not stopped because of this order, it's just gonna make a few more requirements. It'll make you be, you still build outside the gap field in the flood, in the floodplain. You're just gonna have to footbreak this building and make sure you can protect it from the flood reasonably safe.
It's gonna be 15-foot long.
And that's gonna make you cost for me, isn't it?
They're gonna go somewhere else.
Right. It's killed 441 and a while away. We don't have a lot of new buildings going down that way.
So you all shut your play up.
Every time you play up.
Well, then, there's plenty of property available. That's what Willis is saying.
Yeah, there's plenty available.
It's the real estate market, not itself.
Yeah, it's economic.
The property that was praised, not economics, meant that way before, but property that's praised at $300,000 and then said, well, lucky to get $100,000 out.
You get the houses that's sold for $300,000, that we're usually looking, get them for 100 a day, so it's across the board.
Chris, go back to your comment, I want to make sure I understand this clearly. You're of the opinion that, that in the floodplain, no damage will occur and no soil will move?
I believe soil, soil will move by, if the floodway is redirected and the velocities are moved around. The velocity on the floodplain, by definition, is negligible, which is why it's considered the plain in lieu of the way. The way is where materials are moved, where deposits come from. And so I think it's important to remember that there's a distinctive difference between the two. And I feel like the conversation often gets lost when people think this discussion's about the floodway, but in fact, it's not. It's about the floodplain.
Well, let's go through another explanation of floodway and floodplain. You know, I, I tend to think about the floodway being, you know, where the major body of water is moving or where there's current. The floodplain's kind of where the, it backs up, so to speak, where maybe that it floods your field, but doesn't cause any damage. Can you tell us what the technical?
That's pretty much it. That's all. Thank you.
But most homes that people have built would have been in the floodplain if they were building in compliance with the ordinance that had built elevated homes. Those would be in the floodplain. Most agriculture's in the floodplain. And that's what people are commenting, too. Most percolation of water back down into the water table is in the floodplain. The spreading out of the water that slows down the water flow is in the floodplain. So almost all comments that were made were about the floodplain.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but my, both my elementary school kids have a show at six o'clock.
Show must go on.
I'm sorry. See.
Public session is closed, but given who you are.
Could I? Thank you. I appreciate it. I, I would just like to, as chairman of the Watership Council of the Republicans, I would like to respond to something my good friend Derek said about, he's glad to sell the property and make money out of it. And I, I want to remind you again that 25% of this ordinance, other than the five pages of definitions, is devoted to telling people how they can safely develop property in the floodplain. The fallacy that I was hearing discussed is that in order to sell my property, I have to fill the floodplain. That's not true. You can develop, you can build, you can put houses, you can do things, and there's four hot pages in here that tells you what it's thought to be safe and how to do that. That's, that doesn't come from anything Watership Council does. That's the National Flood Insurance Program. That's the FEMA recommendations and all. So please don't get into the idea that you can't sell your property because you can't fill it. That's wrong. I think you have all those options open. Sometimes it's a little more difficult to do it safely, but it is not prohibited. There is no prohibition on the Galway property and floodplain.
So Mr. Wright, your property should be less valuable if you don't fill it.
That's pure conjecture, Jim. I don't know. It's either not. But, you know, it's also less valuable nowadays than it was in 2006 or '07 after we had all the real estate policy. But don't interpret, please don't interpret this ordinance and the no fill provision as a prohibition against development because it is not.
I agree. Why do you think FEMA allows filling in the floodplain?
As I said earlier, when we looked at this, FEMA ordinance is a national ordinance based on coastal plains and major river systems. They don't understand about this. They don't know how small floodplain areas we have and how fast the water rises in this area. The Watership Council looked at this, we felt that it was a rational decision to extend that no fill provision. It is in the floodway, as he was talking about. There's no doubt about that, to extend it because it was safer for our citizens in Macon County.
And you don't believe that FEMA understood what they were doing when they put these maps out?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying FEMA is addressing a major problem nationwide in major coastal areas and major flooding areas, and they're not focused on flooding the mountains. I'm not saying they don't know what they're doing. I'm saying we didn't think, we think, thought we needed to go a little bit further in Macon County to protect our citizens and our emergency rescue.
How would you develop a piece of commercial property in that, that this order?
I'm not prepared to answer that because it's been a long time since I've read every detail of it and I can't really answer that off.
Is there anybody else?
Oh, yeah. Everybody got a view?
Yeah, I would like to speak to Susan's statement about, we're looking at one piece of property and trying to change the ordinance. I'm not sitting here as a planning board member looking at one piece of property trying to change the ordinance. I came here because the county commission told us to look at this ordinance. I wanna look at all of you guys' views and I wanna look at all those other guys' views and try to come to some kind of consensus. This ain't about a piece of property to me. Derek's view of property rights on both sides is a legitimate argument. Okay? By filling in a floodplain, are we gonna hurt somebody downstream? Right now, I don't see it. Right now, I don't see it. By not filling in a floodplain, are we gonna hurt our ecosystem? Right now, I don't see it. You know, I can't, I'm making a decision based on very good scientific information that was presented here tonight and just common sense that, of my own. But I'm not making a decision, if I vote on this, about one piece of property. So I wanted y'all to have that. And I have listened to you and I will try my best to take everything into consideration.
Anybody else?
Carl, could I, can I make one comment that I omitted from my statement? I meant to mention it. Okay, yeah. The, one of the things that's built into the ordinance is the, is a provision for variance requests. Now, if it's not clear enough, that could be made clear. And certainly, there are examples in any ordinance where there have been variances requested and some have been approved, some have been denied. We don't have a variance board in Macon County, but the commissioner of the panel, the planning board could assist with that endeavor. So if there's a specific issue that needs to be addressed, a variance can be requested. A variance on the ordinance. Just wanted to add that in.
Is there anybody on the planning board feels like that they need any more information? Would you move to call Boe? What's, what's Boe's report?
I would like to. I would like to have all planning board members present. Only my group is all people here, not just the defense here. I mean, I understand the guys have a leave, but I'd like for them to be present.
Junior, you did ask, Chester, if you're able to create liability, you. That might be something that we'll address. Before they can change. I think if you never restricted it or never emptied fill, if you're, if you're off the rate, there's no question about it. Somebody could be changing it.
I did see some testimony on news channel that said we can maybe add this Chester.
Well, I think this guy's a lot of work.
So is that the consensus of everyone on the board that we, that we turn and vote on this in our next meeting or we've got a quorum here so we can do whatever we want?
That's just my opinion. That's all of us.
Well, we probably oughta wait till everybody's here. I think they wanted to be here and having to go. I guess they didn't think about the meeting tomorrow, is what I did.
Even if we have a special meeting, I think we all should be present.
He knew that most of it, I think, I didn't understand.
Well, we don't have a chance to move, we don't have a continued consultation and they call special meeting, whatever, at the lake. Basically, that, that special meeting would basically make board. Mr. Chairman, are you still desiring for the board to hear that from that? I think, I think one member requested that.
I'm only, I'm government provision and I can't speak with the commission of the company or if you qualify dollars and cents. Well, in my opinion, but we can queue you here for me.
And it's not so much quantifying dollars and cents as it is looking at the properties that the Economic Development Commission has in their property bank or the, the properties that you guys have in mind particularly. And it doesn't necessarily have to be quantitative, extensive analysis, but just how many of these properties are in a floodplain that would not be in the city limits, that would not be accessible by water, that would not be accessible by sewer? I mean, those properties are ruling themselves out anyway. And they're making, they're making their highest and best use residential development, period.
If you don't have water and sewer, you can't.
Yeah, and, and another, I mean, you know, it's not gonna happen, but I know the town is, is considering, you know, water and sewer for the future and so is the county.
Did Tommy give you indication? They got that biz with thing and all that stuff. It's pretty busy. It'd probably be 80, 90.
One quick question. I can't remember if it might have been Ms. Sloan, the dollar amount of agricultural? Some of it, did I do that number?
Ag is the third largest industry in Macon County. And if you put a multiplier effect of five to it, the receipts are over $40 million. And when Whitley was in danger of closing, I said, "Tommy, does that mean that we moved second?" He said, "Yeah, absolutely." And the farm gate receipts of Macon County increased in one year by over $400,000. And I think, I, I would plead as, I've lived here most of my life and I've seen Miss Lolita Dane's farm, they just gone to development. I would plead for you to really consider the agricultural use because it's important and it can, it is an economic engine for the county. And it costs the county fewer dollars maintaining ag land than it does development, by about a dollar.
It'll be so important. We need water, usually, thanks for the ordinance. I did, I care about.
Also, farmland is very compatible with tourism. Some commercial development is not nearly so compatible with tourism.
But let's, let's pass Matt with, with getting the economic information from Tommy. Then let's let that drive when we have our special call meeting. We don't, without that, I don't think. Is there anybody that has any other piece of information that they feel like that needs to be dropped forward? That Matt can pull together for us so that we'll have everything we need in front of us at our next meeting? Anybody got any, anything they wanna say? Anything they wanna know about?
I have one big question, but I don't think it can be answered.
Far away.
Why are we the only county with all the great rivers in western North Carolina, from Buckland County to Cherokee County, that decided to do this and nobody else did? I don't, I don't understand that.
I don't believe it can be answered, but it can certainly be debated.
Yeah, but that's the point.
Anybody else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Next.
Oh, anyway, I'm sorry.